To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the board is willing, there are a couple of agenda items to add. One is a public gathering permit, which could be added under Selectment Action as item E. And then there's three appointments that would be added under Appointments and Resignations. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries and those items are added. We'll begin with public audience. Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. Recently, the Board of Selectmen received a whistleblower letter from a town employee alleging a hostile work environment pertaining to town manager Maria Capriola. The Board of Selectmen are elected by the residents of Simsbury to review any and all allegations of misconduct brought before the Board. The taxpayers of Simsbury expect their employees to have the highest professional standards. Under the Simsbury Town Charter, Section 401, Investigation, the Board of Selectmen shall have the power to investigate any and all offices, boards, commissions, and agencies of the town, and for purposes shall have the power to call witnesses to appear before the Board to testify and to furnish documentation on any matter under investigation, provided a properly constituted meeting of the Board of Selectmen may call before it any employee or officer for the purpose of information or investigation, end quote. The Board of Selectmen has the power to investigate these allegations to the full extent of the law and should immediately convene a meeting to provide a timeline on the investigation into these serious allegations. When the Charter Revision Commission voted to change the charter from a first-electman form of government to a professional town manager, the position of first-electman was discussed in order to have an orderly transition to a professional town manager. The Charter Revision Commission findings stated, quote, "The majority of commissioners see the first select person in Board of Selectmen as the town's policy drivers and the first select person as the spokesperson for the town's legislative body," end quote. First-electman Eric Wellman has become an advocate for special interest groups and has continually promoted his agenda by pandering to various constituencies. First-electman Eric Wellman was promoting having a rainbow crosswalk developed into a permanent installation. Wellman's report stated, I quote, "I asked staff to review the current crosswalk and the feasibility of making it permanent," end quote. It is not the first-electman's position to interact with staff. This is not the responsibility of the first-electman, as written in the Town Charter, Section 412. No members of the Board of Selectmen, including the first-electman or first-electwoman, shall give orders either publicly or privately to any administrative officer or employee, end quote. This is a violation of the charter. First-electman Eric Wellman has given the neighbors concerned about the solar panels false hope that he, Eric Wellman, or town staff has the authority to make changes to the approved site plan. It was determined that all the inquiries should be forwarded to the manager of the solar project, not first-electman Eric Wellman or town staff. Recently, the Gifts of Love advocacy group came before the Board of Selectmen asking for financial support for their lack of funding through grants and private donations. First-electman Eric Wellman stated that there is a, quote, "educational component" to the Eno Trust. That is incorrect. The Eno Trust states, quote, "On November 25, 1882, Amos Eno conveyed 140 acres of land to the town of Simsbury," quote, "to be used for the occupation, maintenance, and support of the town poor of said town and for no other purpose whatsoever, and only for so long as it shall be so occupied and used. And only for so long as the town shall care for and support its poor on the said farm without contracting them out to any person or persons for their care and maintenance, shall said farm belong to said town. When it shall cease to be occupied, it shall revert to the grant or his representative or become part of his or their estate." There is no mention of a, quote, "educational component" in the Eno Trust. Under the administration of the town manager Maria Capriola, there appears to be an increase in grievances for many departments and many employees are under undue stress. Taryn Schrader's grievance was tabled by the Personnel Subcommittee. Gertrude Ducey's employment at the library was terminated for tardiness while under family and medical leave from June 3, 2019, to December 3, 2019. Gertrude Ducey was employed by the town starting at August 12, 2005, allegedly without any incident until her firing as of June 17, 2019, after review of the state determined that her absences were not due to, quote, "willful misconduct." Gertrude Ducey was a library technical assistant and worked in a back room at the library. There is no mention in numerous reports of her inability to complete her work. Gertrude Ducey was paid for four weeks vacation that she accumulated prior to firing. The pattern of tardiness was taken from her computer printout from 3/6, 2019, to 5/30, 2019. It is alleged that 37 employees-
Five minutes, Joan.
...in five and a half years have left the library. The grievances from Sergeant Crawford and Sergeant Tomley from Simsbury Police Department were denied by the Police Commission and will move to mediation. And all my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and News Feed on Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. Would anyone else like to speak? Susan.
Hi, good evening. I'm Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. I'm here for four things tonight. Three are on behalf of The Grange, and one of those is to let you know, I'm trying to do two things at once.
Oh, no worries. Take your time.
Trying to fit these all in, is we're having our annual agricultural fair on Saturday. As you may know, it's the only certified ag fair in the Farmington Valley, and it's a lot of fun. If you have vegetables, baked goods, art, Lego creations with a limit of a 12-inch by 12-inch size, knitting, crocheting, all kinds, canning, jamming, all kinds of do-it-yourself, farm-y type stuff. We have contests with very small cash prizes, but really nice ribbons. We have a wonderful area with children's games, kind of old-fashioned children's games. And this year, instead of selling tickets for each game, we're going to sell a $5 Do Whatever You Want for All Day pass for each kid. So as you know, we try to keep everything at The Grange super affordable and accessible to everyone. And I have some buy-one-get-one free passes that I'll put on the counter out in front in Town Hall. And you can also pick up these passes at Flammick Farm and at Necker's Toy Store. Once again, we have musician Bill Benson, and some of the new things we have this year is a blacksmithing demo and someone who raises monarch butterflies, and we'll have them at all stages of their development. Later that day, it's a busy day for The Grange, we're having our Concert on the Green, which is going to feature the blues band that won the Connecticut Blues Musician Competition at Bushnell Park. It's Sweet Daddy Cool Breeze. They're going to be representing Connecticut in Memphis in May 2020. They're going to be here in Simsbury on Saturday, 3 to 5. And The Grange is also having their electronic recycling event on October 26. So we always have it the last Saturday of October. So start accumulating your recycling electronics for responsible recycling. It'll be from 9 to 12 at Andy's Market, along the theme of trying to limit, you know, stuff that we throw out and being responsible with it. We want to encourage everyone to come to the fair and come to the concert with your own thing for drinks, for lemonade or water, or we'll have paper cups if you don't have that, but we want to encourage people to bring their own drink receptacle. And then my final thing is actually on behalf of myself. I am giving a lecture at Trinity College called Brain Health: Inside and Out, Digesting Basic and Translational Research for Public Policy Purposes, or something like that. Anyway, that's my job at Trinity is as a neuroscientist, and of course, I'm going to integrate my biomedical research and the recent fellowship that I did on Forests of Brain Health at Harvard Forest. So you're all welcome, and it's at 4:30 in the Washington Room, and there will be a reception afterwards where we will serve food that's compliant on a ketogenic diet, which is what I work for, which is a metabolic therapy for epilepsy. I'm sure I forgot something, but thank you.
What was the date of that? I'm sorry.
It's a week from tomorrow, September 17, at 4:30 in the Washington Room at Trinity. The lecture will be about 45 minutes or an hour, then there'll be a little reception with good food. And if you can't attend, I'm going to try and get it taped.
Great. Susan, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Susan.
Anybody else in public audience tonight?
Okay. We will move on to my first-electman's report. On September 16, the Zoning Commission will be discussing Big Y's proposal to build a 52,000-square-foot store on the north side of town. This is a project that has been on the table for a number of years. Big Y had previously gathered all the approvals it needed to build, but has not moved forward until now. The company is in the process of coordinating with the Connecticut Department of Transportation for the excavation permit process and reviewing the plans with town staff. Number of upcoming ribbon cuttings. One to celebrate the new ownership of Huntington Learning Center, 530 Bushy Hill Road. That'll be taking place at noon on Tuesday, September 17. A ribbon cutting to celebrate the grand opening for Cassie's Bridle Closet in the Holloways Plaza. That's Tuesday, September 10, at 5:00 p.m. And a ribbon cutting to celebrate the grand opening of the Terrafill Room, a new space at the Simsbury Public Library, will be Sunday, September 22, at 1:30 p.m. The Terrafill Room is a new program space on the lower level of the library that will be able to accommodate up to 80 people, so we're really excited about that. And also, congratulations to the Zoo Health Club, which celebrated its new expansion late last month. An update on the Rainbow Crosswalk. For the past few weeks, the town has been accepting ideas for the permanent installation near the Performing Arts Center in celebration of our LGBT+ community. The current Rainbow Crosswalk will be replaced by the new design, which will be placed on the bike path out of the way of traffic. On August 12, the Board of Selectmen unanimously endorsed the concept. We'll be reviewing the design ideas and getting additional feedback from the LGBT community, and we plan to paint the permanent installation on October 11, which is National Coming-Out Day. Residents are welcome to attend and roll paint. This date may be pushed back depending on the complexity of the final design, but again, we'll be getting feedback from the community before that's finalized. Opportunities to serve your town. So there are many opportunities to serve on boards and commissions that are appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Number of openings that we have: Community for Care, Clean Energy Task Force, Culture Parks and Rec. Per charter, this position needs to be filled by a registered Republican. Design Review Board, Historic District Commission, Recycling Committee, and the Tourism Committee. If you're interested in applying for any of these, you can do so online, and we've just made it easier. You can go to the homepage of the town website, and you'll see a link to where you can apply. Some upcoming events. Lots happening on Saturday. We've already heard about The Grange Fair. The Simsbury Women's Club is holding the 50th Arts and Crafts Festival. That's taking place both Saturday and Sunday in the parking lots along Iron Horse Boulevard. And finally, the Trinity Church and Terrafill Village Association are hosting their fall festival, September 15, from 11 to 4 on the Terrafill Green.
I'll turn it over to Maria for the town manager's report.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for adding those items to the agenda this evening. We did leave hard copies at your desk, and we will be updating our packet online, so our residents have access to those materials that have been added this evening. Regarding the 350th Anniversary Steering Committee, that group continues to do their good work. They have launched a Facebook page, and so we are trying to help get the word out about that Facebook page through our social media accounts, and just put a link here for folks who might be interested in signing up for that page and getting more information about upcoming events. Good news from our Economic Development Commission. They continue to work on the goal under business recruitment, retention, and outreach, and they will be hosting, with some assistance from our office, their second Business Roundtable Discussion on September 18. Westminster has graciously agreed to host us again at no cost. It was a really beautiful location, really functional space for the last event. So again, we're going to have a small group of business owners come, and our EDC members facilitate a table, a small group of folks, and have a series of questions to get and sort of better learn, you know, perhaps what we can do better, what we can improve on, how we can be more business-friendly, how we can help support our businesses to be successful. So we look forward to that event and that feedback. Again, we are hoping to continue to do that on a quarterly basis, and we have been keeping a list of businesses who are interested in attending future events. So we would just encourage people, if you are a local business owner and you would like to attend a future roundtable event, to please email the town manager's office at townmanager@simsbury-CT.gov, and we will get you signed up for a future session. For departmental news and notes, we have a lot happening in Culture Parks and Rec. The Parks and Open Space Master Plan Survey has been released to the public. This is one of many community engagement pieces to this particular study that we are working on. Many thanks to our steering group that's been helping with this. So if you may recall, we have a small group of town staff, as well as two members from the Park and Rec Commission, and two members of Open Space who have been helping us, and they were incredibly helpful in developing the survey. So again, we're happy that's launched and would encourage folks to participate if they have an interest in sharing thoughts, ideas, and feedback on our parks and open space. There are three different ways you can get there, so we have provided various links that people can take advantage of participating in that survey. As a reminder, fall registrations for our programs and winter ice skating are now underway, and you can do that online at simsburyrec.com. We also have a number of golf course season pass promotions that are currently underway. These promotions will be running through December 1 of this year. It gives folks an opportunity to receive a discounted rate on various golf course passes and the season pass holder in particular promotion. So again, December 1 is the deadline for people who would like to take advantage of that opportunity. From our Simsbury Public Library, they are launching a new Borrow a Bag program for our patrons. So this is a concept of a reusable bag that our library patrons can now take with them when they're checking out a large number of items. In the past, we would often accept plastic bag donations, and then for customers and patrons who were struggling with a lot of items, we would then give out the plastic bags. Given the plastic bag ban that has gone into effect, they have started this Borrow a Bag initiative. Ultimately, if a library patron decides that they would like to keep the bag, there is a $5 fee for that. But again, we hope that this promotes, you know, just being sustainable, but also helps with the convenience to our patrons. From our Police Department, as you may recall from a number of months back, they were working on implementing new uniforms and switching from our current gray to blue uniform. Blue is really more standard, and if you may recall, the gray uniforms are really being phased out and becoming more and more difficult to obtain through our vendor. So we have been phasing in the new uniforms since August 30, and this transition will occur over the next two months. So we are really just trying to help spread the word with the public to help raise awareness that our department is, you know, transitioning in uniforms. SC TV was terrific and helped our police department put together a short informational video about this change in uniforms, so we've provided a link to that video in the report. And a couple of special events. The Culture Parks and Recreation Department partnering with the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center are presenting a movie in the park. This is something I'm just truly excited about and really want to thank Tom and Ms. Giannuno for their efforts. You know, Tom and I had really wanted to try and get things like summer concerts or family movie nights kind of back up and going, and just really want to thank them for their good work on getting this together. So this will be a family movie night. We're going to have the recent live-action Disney film Aladdin playing at the Meadows. It's a free event. The gates will open at 5:30. It's going to occur on Saturday, September 14. There will be a food vendor there, and again, we just hope that people can come out and enjoy that and have a really nice time. And for Social Services, National Suicide Prevention Week is September 8 to the 14. We have two programs that are coming up. Community for Care will be hosting Talk Saves Lives, A Brief Introduction to Suicide Prevention. That will be on September 11 at 6:30 p.m. at the Simsbury Public Library. Social Services will be hosting QPR training, which is Question, Persuade, and Refer, and these are tips to help save a life from suicide. That will be occurring on Monday, September 16, at 6:00 p.m. at Eno. So we hope that folks will be able to join us for those important conversations.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Selectment Action. Item A is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective tonight, September 9, 2019, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $40,107.22 and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, that's approved. Item B is a grant to support local prevention activities. Social Services has the opportunity to apply for a grant supporting things like substance abuse prevention, distracted driving enforcement, self-defense programs and the like. The grant amount would be a little over $5,300. I wanted to see if there's anything anyone wanted to add or any questions for Kristen?
The Community for Care very much appreciates the support of the Department of Social Services in our programming that relates to these subjects.
Is there a motion effective September 9, 2019, to submit a grant application to support local prevention activities and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the grant application?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And along those lines, should the grant be awarded, is there a motion to accept the Local Prevention Activities Grant and authorize Maria Capriola, Town Manager, to execute all documents related to the grant award?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. A couple of public gathering permits. Item C is for the Trinity Church Pumpkin Patch. This is an annual Pumpkin Patch fundraiser that is right outside First Church on Hot Meadows Street. Is there a motion effective September 9, 2019, to approve the public gathering application for Trinity Church Pumpkin Patch as presented and authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item D is a public gathering permit for the family movie night, which is Saturday Aladdin. This is what we just heard about. Any questions on this one? Is there a motion effective September 9, 2019, to approve the public gathering application for the Simsbury Recreation Department Movie Night as presented and authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved.
Or second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Great, looking forward to it. Item E is the recommended appointment of the town assessor. Following David Gardner's retirement as our assessor, there's been an internal recruitment process, and Francine Beland, formerly our assistant assessor, is the recommended candidate. Maria, anything you wanted to add?
Sure, absolutely. I'm really pleased to make this recommendation this evening. Francine did an outstanding job during the recruitment process for this promotional opportunity. She comes to us prior to coming to us last year with about 20 years of experience in the field, and so she's just an experienced professional. She's been terrific to have here. We're really fortunate that she did overlap with David and was able to benefit from some of his mentorship during that time period. And I think she has a lot of great ideas for the department, and we really, Amy and I, look forward to working with her moving forward. I think she's got, again, great ideas around technology deployment for the department, particularly for use of technology in the field, as well as some very, very good ideas around how we can more accurately and quickly capture new growth. And ultimately, that does help with our tax base and, you know, reducing some pressure off of the mill rate. So a lot of great ideas that we're very much looking forward to working with her on. I know Amy very much would have liked to have been here this evening. Unfortunately, she's away at a conference and couldn't be, but I know that she wanted to extend her congratulations as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Any... Anything from board members before we vote?
Excellent.
Okay. Is there a motion effective September 9, 2019, to appoint Francine Beland to the position of Town Assessor with an annual starting salary of $97,265 and employment-related benefits assigned to that position through the collective bargaining agreement associated with that position?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So just staying consistent with past practice, you can feel free to say no, but I did want to offer you the opportunity to say a few words if you wanted to. Oh, no, that's fine, all right. Let me just ex-
You can say thank you.
Free word, no thank you.
Next step, congratulations.
Whoever you want to.
I look forward to working with you all.
Great.
So far, it's been a great time to work with you all.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item F is the proposed Simsbury Farms Ice Rink and Paddle Court fees. So in your packet is the proposed fee schedule. Staff is recommending no change to the paddle tennis fees and an increase of $10 an hour for the Simsbury High School rental rate for the rink and a $5 addition for the skating lessons, the rationale behind the increase being the increase in the minimum wage. That's something that needs to be absorbed. Tom, is there anything you wanted to add?
We had a very good revenue year with the rink last year, and I would say we're not turning people away at this point for rink rentals, so I don't, we don't see any need to raise the rates at this point. We're still well-positioned in the marketplace to succeed. We all cross our fingers for good weather every year out there, and that'll make a big difference, and it has a lot to do with how well we do. Like last year, we had great weather. But yeah, the small increase in the lessons is due to the rising of the wage October 1st, so then we'll manage that going forward as best we can.
And this was endorsed by the Culture Parks and Rec Commission. Are there any questions? Okay. Is there a motion effective September 9, 2019, to approve the fee schedule for the Simsbury Farms Ice Rink and Paddle Tennis Courts as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item G is the Tourism Committee duties and composition. So at our meeting in June, we sent a referral to the Tourism Committee and Economic Development Commission to ask them to develop a joint recommendation about how those committees should work together. And we also asked the Tourism Committee to recommend how many people should serve on the Tourism Committee, since that hasn't been codified anywhere. So the memo that I wrote is a summary of the recommendations that's in your packet. I could take these individually, but I just wanted to see if there were any immediate questions or feedback.
So, yeah. I'd just say, I mean, I like them, and in particular, I like the concept of the, you know, hospitality group getting, you know, the constituencies getting together periodically and talking about what's going on and best practices. It really seems to me that that could produce a lot of good results. So I thought these were very simple but meaningful recommendations, so.
I think it gives us a good basis for these two groups working together going forward, so I think that's a good starting spot.
And I'll share, so Recommendation 1 and 2 essentially say that someone from Tourism should be appointed to the EDC, which has already happened.
Right.
So that's an important connection. There was some conversation about whether the Hospitality Task Force or the group that would come together quarterly to share ideas, et cetera, would replace Tourism, possibly. And there was some robust discussion around that, but the group wasn't ready to make that recommendation at that time. So I guess I'll also share that we've approached, I think, at least one group to see if they would be interested in organizing the Hospitality Task Force, so that's something we're looking for. Okay, any other thoughts or questions?
The only one I'll push back on is number three. I mean, we don't write blank checks to any group, so if Tourism wants to come in with a specific request for funding, we can certainly consider that, but we don't just allocate money to any group in this town department or otherwise for to-be-determined purposes.
Yeah, so that's the feedback that I gave them, when they've been, you know, asking for some time for some amount of money for brochures and marketing activities, and I shared with them that if they gave us a proposal that coincided with our annual budget season, that that's something we could definitely consider.
It's also something that we cut during the budget process because Main Street was spearheading that, were they not, the marketing proposals, so we need to make sure that all the groups are lined up doing the same things, so. Oh, yeah, good point.
Yeah.
Finally, and this is something that would require our action, the recommendation from the Tourism Committee was to cap their membership at 16, with the theory being that they really don't want to cap it at any number, but we do need to have a maximum number so we know how many people can possibly be appointed. They felt like 16, they would probably never get to that number, so that would be their recommendation. So I guess I'll ask if there's a motion to increase the number of Tourism Committee members to 16.
How many do they have now?
There's no, at the moment, I think there's 12 or 13 people.
13 as of the summer.
Okay.
Eric, I'll move that.
I second that with a caution of, doesn't sound very efficient, but if that's what they want, okay.
they want, okay.
Is there any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Lastly, Item H is a possible ordinance to prohibit the public and intentional feeding of wildlife. So as you know, the police have shared with us data showing that the increasing number of calls for service specifically due to our bear population. We're also seeing greater interactions between people and other forms of wildlife, including coyotes and bobcats. Earlier this summer, we adopted a non-binding resolution that asks the public to refrain from using bird feeders during warmer months, not keeping trash out overnight, not intentionally feeding wildlife, and that's to be accompanied by a public information campaign. And that's all good, but the discussion that I wanted to have tonight is about an ordinance that would prohibit the intentional feeding of wildlife. I think what wildlife would be included and how that ordinance would be structured is absolutely open to conversation. At our meeting in August, we heard from a number of residents who shared their experience with coyotes. If we took any action tonight, my recommendation would be to request that the Public Safety Subcommittee or a smaller group of that committee work on a draft ordinance. And before I open it up for discussion, I just want to acknowledge how challenging this issue is, because wildlife policy is largely driven at the state levels, the state level, and the levers that we have locally are really limited by comparison. Tom, is the liaison to public safety?
Sure.
Go ahead.
I mean, so I appreciate this has come back. I will tell you that the Public Safety Subcommittee did take coyotes, and I believe we were aware of the unfortunate incident with the dogs at the time that we were discussing this. The advice of the chief, and I would certainly circle back with him, is that feeding prohibitions were nice from a public relations standpoint, but highly challenging to enforce, and actually, in his professional opinion, created neighbor versus neighbor situations and really didn't actually solve the problem. Again, it's also a matter of resources. Are we going to have the lieutenant and other folks stake out properties and do sting operations on people putting bread in the woods? And again, these are, these are real challenges, but a nice, nice concept, but I don't want to lead the public to believe that we're going to pass an ordinance and, boom, this problem is going to be solved. These animals are here for a large part because of our development, because of our topography, because of our conservation efforts, and those are all really good things that we've had, our conservation efforts. But if you look on a map, you can see a line straight from the neighborhoods that this happens to, right up into the great state of Vermont and Massachusetts and other places. There's corridors for these animals to travel to. There's obviously substantial water supply, in no small part thanks to our water ordinance, I'm sure. And, you know, again, they are continuing to interact with the public. The challenge is, Eric, as you rightly said, and we had this debate at public safety, is we have very little actual power here. We cannot thin the population, nor am I recommending we do that at this point, but, so short of relocation, removal, a $50 parking fine for putting bird seed out might feel nice at the legislative level, but I really do question, and again, based on the chief's advice, whether it actually moves the needle or not. And again, the last thing I want to do is give folks in this community a false sense of security that they can let their dogs out again because we passed the feeding ordinance. You know, again, the challenge is, like anything, and, you know, we can have a spirited debate on ordinances, and I'm not digging in on the concept of an ordinance, but, you know, if somebody puts out meat or dog food or a loaf of bread at night, it's really, really difficult to enforce. It's awful that it, that it then causes these incidents. And again, I don't want to pass an ordinance because of one or two isolated situations either. So again, happy to take it up with public safety, but just want to caution this group and public, we have considered this to some extent already. And again, the chief's advice at the time was these ordinances are generally ineffective and hard to enforce.
Thank you, Sean.
I think those are good comments. For me, there is a little bit of a shift that makes it at least worth having a subgroup explore this. And I do think there's two issues. There's one, controlling the animal population. And then there's two, which I think this was more directly trying to touch upon, which is how do you manage individuals that are feeding animals? That that feeding of animals creates a situation that's detrimental to a community, whether it's a neighborhood or a town overall. And I do think, I can think of at least two incidents, and they're not both in Simsbury, that have been fairly public lately of individuals feeding wildlife, where you can demonstrate it has had a significant impact on the pattern of wildlife behavior. In one case, it's bears, and in another case, it's coyotes. And that it is creating a health hazard to people within either those neighborhoods or those communities. If you talk with people, there are other people who tell you that they're, they live in a neighborhood where someone does something. So there are other incidents that are out there. So to me, the issue is, is something that might be a little bit more controllable, which is if you have someone who blatantly is feeding wildlife, that people have tried to address it, that the community have tried to address it, but they're doing it in such a substantial nature that it really is causing a risk to an area, we know right now that the town can do nothing in light of those individuals, but they are legitimately causing a health risk to a community. And so what do we do? What, what can we do in those situations? And that's where I think you actually have to look at an ordinance to have some type of enforcement policy. And Sean, I think your comments are very well-taken. Ordinances, you know, that have enforcement, they become kind of messy. You know, we know that with the, you know, sidewalk shoveling, with the, you know, fire hydrant ordinance. You get into a lot of nuances, is, you know, when do you actually enforce it, when don't you? Do you potentially have someone, you know, being called out by a neighbor for something that's small? So I acknowledge all of those, but at the same time, I have always expressed that what an ordinance does is, is it helps you figure out what to do that's complicated before you have to do it. Because, you know, quite honestly, we may face a point where we have to deal with a situation, and there's a lot of subtleties to it that, to me, a conversation on an ordinance would help us figure out beforehand. So without dictating that we should have an ordinance, I do, I did like the idea of having an appropriate subgroup, just relook at the issues in specific of feeding, you know, wildlife.
Chris? Sean, you go ahead.
Just because I can't resist looking into these things, I started to look at ordinances in other parts of the country, other parts where there's more significant wildlife even than we have here. And I think that it is worth having a conversation about what we can do and what we can't do and what effect it will have. Some of those other states have developed a standard that revolves around creating a public nuisance, and those are laws that essentially we already have. So I think it would, might be worth having a conversation with our law enforcement about how we incorporate the intentional feeding of wildlife into the public nuisance statutes, because it seems to be a more evidence-based type, not a willy-nilly, you know, one neighbor doesn't like the other neighbor's bird feeder type enforcement. But it gets the point across to the public in general that we are serious about dealing with something that could be a risk to humans and domestic animals. So I think I would support the work group concept to discuss this.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl.
So I want to say that I am in support of the work group as well, just, I think there's a couple of points. The, I think it's interesting that, from my very superficial research now that, that we're one of the, our sister and peer states around us have, at the state level, wildlife management legislation, which is kind of interesting that we don't. So whether we push this back or we, along with our conversations around the bear, and we ask for a more holistic review of this and something to be taken at a higher level, that could come from this. I am 100% in lockstep with Sean. Ordinance, additional legislation at the local level, and ordinances just drive me wild that we keep, continue to lay this on, and we go back that we should all be just custodians of common sense in some things, right? But what's, what, why I would push forward for the conversation to look into this further in addition to the comments you all made, is that, you know, our option here is very black and white in A, and that is just to decline the motion and move forward and just forget the issue. And when you have a group of individuals from a neighborhood who are passionate about an issue because they particularly think there's a threat to safety, then I would be remiss because I'm no wildlife expert. So saying yes or no to something without having a possibly more expanded conversation and having somebody come back to us and saying, no, you don't need an ordinance, I'd be more comfortable with that because it's too, this is too final tonight to make this decision. So that's why I push it forward for further conversation, get a little more, get more up-to-date information. And I hate to ask the Public Safety Committee to do more work than they already do, but I feel more comfortable with that way, that approach.
Yep. I have no objection, again, to leading this effort through public safety. I think that's the right place for it, whether it's a subset or the entire group or however. And obviously, I think we have a meeting next week?
Uh, yes.
So it's very timely to get it on the agenda. I believe we've also got a meeting set up, or trying to set up a meeting with DEEP.
Correct.
Again, to make sure that our efforts are not lost at the state level. And again, trust me, this is not lost upon me. A good friend of mine's dog was actually killed this weekend by a coyote in a neighboring town. He lives on a large piece of property. I don't believe it was related to neighbors' feedings or otherwise, I'm not, but again, this is, this is a real problem, and I sympathize with it. I go out with my dogs every night, I have a fenced yard. Neighbor of mine, five houses down, had four coyotes in her yard last night, you know, so this is, I get that it's real and present, and Chris, your comments are right on, we can't bury our head in the sand and pretend like this doesn't exist. I just want to be very sensitive as this board takes action and folks go, yeah, we're excellent. Very limited authority to what we can actually do here. Our biggest work probably still remains at convincing our legislators to do something at the state level from a wildlife management standpoint. And that's a very sensitive topic. It's not friendly for the animals generally, and I understand that, but, you know, we have limited tools in our toolbox here. I like your idea, Sheri, of the public nuisance. Again, we can't change the statute and how it's applied, but we can certainly talk to our public safety folks on how they view that. So very willing to take the conversation up.
Very much appreciate the conversation. Is there a motion effective September 9th, 2019 to, to ask the Public Safety Subcommittee to review the feasibility of establishing an ordinance to prohibit the public from intentionally feeding wildlife?
I'll move that.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Moving on to appointments and resignations, is there a motion to accept the resignation of Susan Van Cleef as a regular member of the Clean Energy Task Force, retroactive to August 23rd, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Is there a motion effective September 9th, 2019 to appoint Robert Halfand as a regular member of the Board of Ethics with the term expiring January 1, 2023?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion effective September 9th, 2019 to appoint Melissa Osborne as an alternate member of the Zoning Commission with the term expiring December 2nd, 2019?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Is there a motion effective September 9th, 2019 to appoint Lori Lebedkin as a regular member of the Tourism Committee with the term expiring December 2nd, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Next is a review of minutes. Any feedback on the minutes from the August 12th meeting? Okay. Are there any Selectman Liaison and Subcommittee reports?
I think you hit most of mine in the two reports, but just a reminder, this Wednesday, September 11th, 6:30 PM at the library, Talk Saves Lives, Suicide Prevention Program.
Same thread, I know it's already been mentioned, but because I'm such a huge fan of Tom's efforts, first of all, the Parks, for those who tuning in late, Parks and Open Space Master Plan Survey is open, please participate, please, people, participate. Everybody, please participate. All your thoughts and guidance are incredibly important.
If you have ever come to us saying, why isn't there a splash pad?
Yeah. Okay, anyways, second, the Family Movie Night, that's a super cool opportunity for this town to come together. It's a great new idea. It's a great way for people who may have never experienced anything yet at the Performing Arts Center to do it with their family. It is free. Please come and support that effort so we can see that come together as a community. And going back, Eric's mention of open positions, there is an open position on the Parks and Rec Committee. It's an incredibly important committee led by, instituted by some very committed individuals. It's a wonderful opportunity for somebody to join that committee. There's, there are great leadership there, and I encourage anybody who's interested in getting involved at Tom level, that it is a wonderful place to start. Please look into that opening. And, I'm sorry, a happy anniversary to my wife. I'm sorry I'm not home for dinner, sweetie.
Good one.
So, yeah, that'll give you a couple of points.
Horns is closed, buddy.
Yeah, I know.
I just wanted to give an update on the unaffiliated work group that Mike Payne and I are part of. One of the things that we've been looking at with the help of our town clerk is, we have about five boards or commissions that either no one is appointed to but exist, or people are appointed to it and they don't meet. So there's some additional research going into sort of the story there and whether we have the power to possibly sunset some of these. So I just wanted to give this group a heads up, because we would obviously reach out to the liaison, which would be one of you, before we would move forward with anything. And if there are members who are seated but not meeting, we would also want to, you know, reach out to them and make it an inclusive process. But I just wanted, you know, this group to know that it's a conversation that's happening just to, just to clean, clean that up.
Which boards are those?
I don't want to, I don't want to single anyone out right now.
Human Relations.
Yeah, Human Relations.
We got rid of that in the last charter, didn't we?
It's an, it's an ordinance still. Human Relations and, I'm sorry, I don't have the list in front of me, there were two that are still separate ordinances, and those committees haven't been meeting for some time. Health and Welfare, thank you. Yeah, those were the two that are still established by ordinance.
There's nobody appointed to that. Those are subcommittees of the Board of, Welfare and Finance are subcommittees of the Board of Selectmen. HR, I thought we got rid of in the last charter change, so the fact that it's an ordinance is news, at least to me.
Yeah, we have a couple of ordinances that might need to be repealed or just rescinded if you decide to move in that direction.
Can I ask a question about that? I don't know if this is the right time to ask that question, but if you have a board or commission and there are members who do not participate on a regular basis and have not done so, say, for a year, is there any town policy for removing them, or is that up to the individual boards and commissions? Because I've had that question asked by some chairpeople.
Sure, it's a great question, and it's one that we spoke with Bob about, particularly in regards to the EDC ordinance. So we currently don't have an ordinance that addresses things like that regarding board and committee appointments. So for somebody's non-attendance, that's generally not a basis for removal. However, if you do have a separate policy or an ordinance that indicates non-attendance, whatever that threshold might be, that that is an opportunity for removal. So you may recall with the EDC ordinance, there is language about non-attendance resulting in somebody's removal. And I believe, I have to go back and check, I think we also note that in the, was it the JR, I think perhaps the JR and our Youth Services Advisory Board working that into the policy. So that just might also be a good, you know, update as we continue to update those sort of policies and procedures for the various committees that we include that language.
For boards and commissions that are not established by ordinance, can they establish their own bylaws to?
Internal?
Account for that?
No, we appoint them.
I know, we appoint them. I'm just asking the question because it's been asked of me.
We appoint them, and we appoint them for a specific term. We're not delegating our power, we don't have the power to remove anybody.
To remove them.
My thought was to potentially ask, ask the individual if they haven't shown up in a year if they would be interested in stepping aside.
Yes.
I think that's been done in a couple of these cases, but.
Well, the term will eventually end.
It will. It's just, you know, for boards that may not have 16 members, you know, I need to get quorums and things done. I understand the concern of the chairs who feel a need to move forward with certain items.
Agreed.
Anyway, I just thought, while we're thinking about how that happens.
Yeah, it's a slippery slope when you start firing volunteers.
Yeah, no, I know, I know. I don't, and that is what I told them, that, but I told them I would ask the question.
Okay, good. Good conversation. Any other reports? Okay. Anything anyone wanted to bring up under the communications section? Nope. Okay, then I will ask if there's a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the possible purchase of two parcels of real estate and to discuss the town manager's annual performance review. We'll be joined in the first executive session by Maria Capriola, Melissa Appleby, and Tom Tiberzki, and in the second by just Maria.
So moved.
I'm okay.
And Mike Liddon in the first one.
And Mike Liddon as well, in the first one. And that was moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.